The meeting of the Shreveport City Council has not been called or ordered. Councilman Bradford will lead us in the evocation and Councilman Butcher, I told it was Butcher, it's not Butcher, it's Butcher, will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we come again, Lord thanking you for this day and for all your blessings. As we come, Lord, we ask your blessings upon this meeting. May it be done with decency and in order. Bless all those that partake of the governance of this city, our mayor, our department heads, our council members. There be said today, Lord, that we have done everything that's in the best interest of the city and that when we leave here, we would be looked on as favorable to our citizens. Bless us. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Place the flag and put your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Councilman Bradford?
Present.
Councilwoman Jordan?
Present.
Councilman Nickerson?
Present.
Councilman Butcher?
Here.
Councilman Jordan?
Here.
Councilman Jordan?
Here.
And Councilman Fuller?
Here. Tomorrow, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the administrative conference on April 8th and the city council meeting on April 9th and a special meeting also from April 15th. Any council member have any recognitions or what they'd like to state at this time? None? Madam Perkins, do you have any awards or recognitions at this time?
I do, Mr. Chairman. We have Capital One Bank and Healthy Blue both here. Oh, tomorrow? Oh, never mind, they're not here today. Ms. Chief? Well, never mind, we'll do all my announcements tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay, alright. Mr. Green, Mr. Harris, anyone have anything in the communications for property standards?
Oh, wait, I do.
Okay, Mr. Harris?
How are you doing today?
Oh, just fine. And you?
I'm doing well. I've got some, some of my constituents are concerned about a property, I think, on Jenkins Street. I'll send you the exact address.
Okay.
But it's owned by a local church and they're not taking care of it, they're not maintaining, and the grass has gotten out of control and they're starting to have a pest problem.
Okay.
Snakes and all that fun stuff. So, we appreciate you looking at it and I'll get you the exact address.
Okay, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that was another property, Ms. Harris, and I spoke to Mr. Green about it, but it seemed to be lingering. There's a, there's a property on Gary Street at the corner of Gary and Norma, but it's, it's the houses on Gary. But anyway, the neighbors are really complaining. It was, it was cited last year, but now it's unoccupied. The grass and the, and the, all the, all the debris around it is, is really accumulating. So, I need, I need something to be done.
Okay, let me do some research and I'll give you, let me do some research on it and I'll call you tomorrow.
And I'll email you the, the, the address, okay?
Okay.
Take it out for me, okay?
I'll do it.
Mr. Harris, I rode down Fairfield between Piermont and East 70th over the weekend and noticed quite a few lots with grass that was waist-high. And if you could just have somebody run down there and take appropriate action, I'd appreciate it.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Harris, everything's southern hills real good. Just keep up the good work.
Mr. Clark will have a master plan committee report tomorrow and also Ms. Jones will have a budget to actual finance report. For the public hearing tomorrow, we're required to hold two public hearings tomorrow from Resolution 56 and Ordinance 46 of 19 to be adopted. Ms. Jones, will there be any legislation to be added tomorrow?
Not that I'm aware of.
Alright. We have the following request to speak.
Ms. Lauren Ray Anderson.
I was not ready to speak. Hello, my name's Lauren Ray Anderson.
Hello.
Oh, address? I don't have my glasses on, I'm a little out of sorts. Lauren Ray Anderson, address 247 East Listre Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I am here to talk today about the Shreveport PD and just to touch on issues of corruption. I've had about three interactions with Shreveport PD in the past three or four months and I've been very displeased with how I was treated, how the police handled the situations. In the first one, the officer just appeared lazy, like he didn't even want to get out of his patrol car to address a problem. I think it's because it was like a drizzly day or something. He just came off as very, I don't know, pathetic, really. He didn't seem to have command of the situation, which is something I would expect of a police officer. Second interaction was a couple of months ago, riding bicycles downtown and the local police decided to spend about 40 minutes of police time harassing me and my friend simply because we were riding bicycles downtown. So, they spent 40 minutes harassing two dorky hipsters on bicycles instead of addressing Shreveport's real problems. And then the third instance, most recently, I was outside doing yard work and had somebody approach me in my backyard and I physically felt threatened. Didn't really do much about it besides tell my neighbors, tell my friends and family, and then it happened again. So, I decided that it was important to report it in case something in the future happened. And the officers came over, didn't introduce themselves, didn't have name tags on, and then once I told them my story, they basically told me I was wasting their time. I asked for a card, they didn't have a card, and so I had to get their names verbally. And I've gotten to the point where I had to file, or I felt like I needed to file a, an internal affairs claim on that one. So, there's a written filed complaint I'm waiting to hear back on. It says I have one minute?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, and I'm just such, it's, Shreveport PD, something seriously needs to be done. New management, reorganization, just better, more qualified people who actually want to help the people of Shreveport and actually are capable of helping the people of Shreveport. And then to the members of the council lately, those who are standing up to corruption, speaking out, being strong, staying strong against corruption, we appreciate it. Thank you. Shreveport's had it up to here. It's time for a change to those who are just, you know, laying low and letting the corruption continue while you line your pockets. 2022 is going to come sooner than we think. Thank you.
We have the following, is that it?
There are no further requests to speak, Mr. Chairman.
We have the following executive appointments to be considered tomorrow. That's the Shreveport Airport Authority, Dr. Benjamin Foster and Kenneth Morrow. And on the Human Relations Commission, we have Felice Williams, three-year term, Markevia Campbell, three-year term, and Lenny McCrave, a reappointment for three years. Councilman Bradford?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can I, can I speak real quick, Councilman, before you come?
Sure, I hear you, to the mayor.
Yeah, can we, can we postpone, we need to postpone the, or we're asking, requesting to postpone the airport board appointment. We got a letter from the FAA where we need to meet a deadline by May 1st or we're going to be in jeopardy of losing our FAA funding. So, we, we need to stabilize that board right now so that they can make a decision and we can get that under control before we go forward with new appointments. Okay?
Councilman Bradford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess I need to ask the city attorney first. Are you familiar with the response from the Attorney General?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. What's your, what's your opinion? Do you agree with it or do you have some reservations about it?
I disagree with it. We, we have read the same information but have come to two totally different legal analysis and conclusions based on that information. I, I think the ultimate issue was not necessarily addressed, or at least in my opinion, not addressed in that, in that opinion. However, I respect the opinion that was issued from the AG's office and I just think that should it come to such a point, it would lie in the trier of fact or fact finder for what the ultimate outcome is.
So, and I'm speaking as your attorney for the city council, and I heard the mayor, he wants to postpone it and I, and I have no problem with that at all. But if, if the city council was to be challenged legally in this regards, do you not think that the opinion of the Attorney General will have weight?
Um, I don't think it would have any more weight than my opinion, for lack of better words. I mean, the, the opinions from the Attorney General's office, they're not binding, they're just, they give guidance, just as any other secondary source would give guidance. I think ultimately, a judge or a finder of fact would have to come to the ultimate conclusion as to whether or not it can or cannot be done.
Okay. So, Mayor, how long delay you was expecting for this appointment, these appointments?
As of now, I'm just saying two weeks. I just need to, like I said, May 1st is our deadline with the FAA and that's what I'm focused on. That's what's most important in our cities. We have millions and millions of dollars on the line with FAA grant funding. And this is the third time that they've given us an extension and I, I fear that this will be the last extension. It will be devastating to the operations of our airport if we get that money.
But help me understand, now, the, the board is not, is not without representation? I mean, those that are, there are legitimate board members?
Yeah. And that's the reason why we can get the, there's lease agreements that will put us in compliance. That's the reason why I'm postponing the new appointees so that they can make a decision because the decision needs to be made rather quickly.
Okay. So, you're saying the, keeping everybody in place, the status would, would improve your ability to get this done?
Yeah, to stabilize it. The members of the board that have been on it for a while and they know the history. I don't want to bring in new members to make such a big decision in the, you know, 11th hour.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
So, we'll, we have to deal with the other thing when that time comes. I, I would like to speak with somebody on the Human Relations Commission if no of the councilmen have any issues with, with the current discussion with the airport. Somebody?
No, sir.
Is anybody here from the Human Relations Commission to be, to be, to be confirmed?
Yeah, I think on the front row, yeah.
Hello.
Hello. Tell me about yourself.
My name is Markevia Campbell. I am an educator here in Caddo Parish, 8th grade math teacher, and I also serve on the education committee for Mayor Perkins. I'm the chair, the co-chair person along with Dr. Sandra McCullough.
So, why would you be interested in the Human Relations Commission? Are you familiar with the Human Relations Commission?
I am familiar with the commission. I don't know any of the individuals that are on the commission right now, but by definition, the commission is something that I've been doing for about six or seven years now. I was an undergrad at Centenary and I was a participant in various diversity organizations, the Multicultural Association, which I served president of, the Shreveport, now Chapter I'm very involved in, the National Organization for Women at Centenary, my brother, my keeper, which was a diversely male organization at Centenary. So, I've had my hand in a lot of organizations where it's about the upliftment and the diversity of various folks, you know, races, sexual orientations, religions, that sort of thing.
The reason I'm asking these questions, I, in 90, 91 and 92, I was a part of what we established in was a racial commission. And from that commission came the Greater Shreveport Human Relations Commission. And I was one of the first commissioners on that board. And, and it was really a very positive organization within the city. I thought racial relations were really being forged and, and we had a really good overall working relationship with all aspects of the city. How do you view racial relations in Shreveport?
Uh, right now, I think that in general, it is at an all-time high. And I think that it's at an all-time high because of what's going on at the top. I think that, and I truly do believe in setting the tone.
When you said all-time high, and what, what are you using high as, as a, categorize high, what you mean?
Well, I'm 25 and so I don't know. I can only read and educate myself on what I've identified racial tensions to be, you know, in the 90s and so forth. But as a 25-year-old and as a millennial, to me, you would typically think that things like race or any type of form of discrimination would be sort of gone. It wouldn't be something that we have to sort of worry about right now. But as a 25-year-old, I have seen just several accounts where there are still moments of racial discrimination, sexism, ageism, various things of that nature. And you would think that in the year of 2019, that that is something that has long passed, but it is not. And being as young as I am, it has definitely opened my eyes to being fortunate to be able to do the various things that I've done, but still know that there are obstacles out there racially, sexually, whatever the case may be, to sort of become obstacles along the way.
And I appreciate your candor on that because I was, I would have expected your, your, your generation would have had a kinder, gentler America, especially within Shreveport.
Right.
But the, the, the configuration of the Human Relations Commission is different than it was the original one. You have investigative powers and some things that you can really address, some of the issues regarding the issues that you mentioned. I want you to be as candid and, and as open on the commission as you are here today. Okay? We got to, we got to change the culture of some of the mindset of this, of this city. We got to, we got to work together.
Absolutely.
I mean, I think it was Martin Luther King Jr. who said, "Either we will learn to live together as brothers or we'll die as fools." Let's, let's not, let's not die as fools. Use your voice on the commission to forge greater, greater respect and relations within this city, okay?
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, Councilman Fuller?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Campbell, I am really excited to see you today and I think that you are a great selection for this commission. So, congratulations for that. I will definitely be voting to confirm you. But I want to tell you that I take umbrage with you saying how old you are because I remember meeting you when you were in high school. Will you tell everyone where you graduated from high school?
I graduated high school in the year 2012.
What school?
Green Oaks Performing Arts Academy.
Yeah, I met him in the school library. I was there doing a visit and I just was very taken with him. Was very excited to meet back up with him these couple of years later until he went and told y'all how old he was. But I was just, I was just 22 when I was there at the campus, I promise. But I'm just, I'm really proud to see you here today and I'm, I'm excited for you. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Appreciate you so much.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, Councilman Green?
Mr. Campbell, I'd just like to say congratulations. I would not want you to go to school tomorrow and tell my daughter that I didn't say nothing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Campbell. Ms. Jones, can you proceed with the regular agenda legislation, please?
Resolution number 43 is recognizing Marvin Javert Jaws Williams and to dedicate Gloria Drive and Hendry Street in honor of Marvin Javert Jaws Williams for his commitment and contributions to Moretown and the city of Shreveport. Resolution 45 is dedicating Madeline Street and Roberts Street in honor of the late Reverend Woodrow Kimball Jr. for his commitment and contributions to Moretown and the city of Shreveport. Resolution 46 is recognizing Dr. Calvin Kimball and to dedicate Ellison Street at Hollywood Avenue in honor of Dr. Calvin Kimball for his commitment and contributions to Moretown and the city of Shreveport. Resolution 47, authorizing the mayor and/or Shreveport Police Chief to execute a memorandum of, memorandum of agreement between the city of Shreveport Police Department and Louisiana National Guard for the purpose of setting forth the policies and procedures concerning the management, use and support of National Guard equipment and its personnel assigned to conduct counter-drug support missions. Resolution 48 is authorizing the mayor to execute a permanent utility servitude agreement between the city of Shreveport and Ascension Classical School hereinafter, called owner, and acting herein through John Montgomery, Board President for the Sanitary Sewer Main along Southern Loop. Resolution 49 is authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of active donation between the city of Shreveport and Ascension Classical School hereinafter, called owner, and acting therein through John Montgomery, Board President for the Sanitary Sewer Main and related facilities along Southern Loop to serve Ascension Classical School. Resolution 50 is authorizing the mayor to execute a permanent utility servitude agreement between the city of Shreveport and A.B. Glenn Properties LLC hereinafter, called owner, and acting through Robert Ielio for the Sanitary Sewer Main along Southern Loop. Resolution 51 is authorizing the execution of cooperative endeavor agreement with the Film Prize Foundation. Resolution 52 is authorizing the donation of surplus property, specifically motorized vehicles of the city, of the Shreveport Police Department, which are not needed for a public purpose, to a political subdivision. Resolution 54, a resolution of the city of Shreveport urging the Louisiana State Legislature to repeal state overreach into local control of worker protection policies. Resolution 55, a resolution to support the LSU Health Sciences Center, Shreveport Medical Education and Wellness Building Project. Resolution 56, finding and determining that a public hearing has been held and that no petition has been filed objecting to the proposed issuance by the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, of its water and sewer revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $20 million, authorizing the officials of said city to proceed with the preparation of the documents required for the issuance of such bonds.
Alright, any discussion on any of that?
Ms. Fuller?
Yes, sir.
While it's just a recommendation and urging our delegation to, to forward these, the responsibility of, I'm trying to find your resolution now, which one is it, 44?
54.
54, okay. Can you, can you, can you kind of enlighten me on what exactly is happening with this resolution?
What we're doing is urging our state delegation to, to vote in favor of a House bill that will return the discussions about minimum wage to the local level. So, right now, if the state wanted to act on raising the minimum wage, it would be a state-level conversation. All parishes would be, would have to enact that, that minimum wage based on what the states, the state sets. Or we would never be able to have that conversation. In order for us as a municipality to have that conversation, but we want to set our minimum wage to be, we have to have local control to do that, which we do not have right now. So, what we're doing is, is saying that we would support our local state reps and senators to support this bill. So, it starts with the representatives, the legislators in the House. They're going to be looking at this from the Labor Committee first and hopefully from there it'll go to the full House and that they would vote in favor of returning that control to us so that we can decide what we want our minimum wage to be at this level. We may decide that we don't want to change it or touch it at all, but we, it would be our right as a city to do so.
So, there's no, there's no minimum wage number?
No, no, sir.
It's just the responsibility of setting it?
We're just trying to start the conversation at the local level. But we can't even have that conversation about what we want it to be until we can do it legally, which means getting the state to remove the overreach that allows them to set it for the whole state and to keep us from having that conversation.
So, when you, when you're using the term local, what, what, what would be the parameter of, of the local?
Our jurisdiction would just be the city.
Just the city?
Mm-hmm. Now, it would be wonderful if we were able to collaborate with the entire region to set something universal. That would require probably some communication between parish and our neighbors across the river if we wanted to think that way. But we could still, we could still talk about setting something just for the city.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, anyone else? None. Ms. Jones, would you proceed?
Resolution 57, authorizing the mayor to accept a monetary donation of $75,000 from Judah and Astrid Hertz to the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, to be utilized by the Shreveport Public Assembly and Recreation Department for Project Swim.
No, Ms. Jones?
Ordinance 50 is amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2019 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 51, an ordinance amending the 2019 general fund budget. Ordinance 52 is amending the 2019 general fund budget. Ordinance 53 is to amend and reenact certain sections of Chapter 94 of the Code of Ordnances, city of Shreveport, Louisiana, relative to utilities. Ordinance 54 is zoning case number C-24-19 and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of East 70th Street and East Burcun's Industrial Loop, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R-17 Single Family Residential District to C-3 General Commercial District. Ordinance 55 is zoning case number C-25-19 and ordinance, ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on 1925 Crosslake Boulevard, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from C-1 Neighborhood Commercial District to R-17 Single Family Residential District. Ordinance 56 is zoning case number C-27-19 and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the west side of Linwood Avenue between Bolinger Street and Wilkinson Street, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from I-2 Heavy Industrial District to C-3 General Commercial District to C-4 Heavy Commercial District. Ordinance 57, zoning case number C-30-19 and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southeast corner of West Burcun's Industrial Loop and West Port, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from C-3 General Commercial District to I-1 Light Industrial District.
Alright, any discussion on that? Seeing none. Ms. Jones, ordinance on second reading and final passage, please?
Ordinance 26 is to revise Article 4, Division 3A of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, Code of Ordnances relative to the duties and responsibilities of the deputy chief of police. Ordinance 27 is to repeal and replace Article 7 purchases in Chapter 26 Finance of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, Code of Ordnances relative to purchases. Ordinance 32 is levying and authorizing the collection of a tax of 15 and 3/100ths mils per dollar on all properties subject to ad valorem taxation within the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, for the year of 2019 for the purpose of paying principal and interest on the outstanding general obligation bonds. Ordinance 33 is levying and authorizing the collection of various taxes totaling 17 and 65/100ths mils per dollar on all properties subject to ad valorem taxation within the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, for the year 2019 in the amounts and for the purposes described herein. Ordinance 34 is levying and authorizing the collection of a tax of 8 and 64/100ths mils per dollar on all properties subject to ad valorem taxation within bounds of the Downtown Development District of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, as defined by Louisiana Revised Statutes 33:2740.38 for the year of 2019. Ordinance 35 is a serious ordinance pursuant to the general bond ordinance, authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $20 million principal amount of taxable water and sewer revenue bonds of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, as provided in a notice of intent given by Resolution Number 23 of 2018, adopted on March 13, 2018, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the general bond ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, pledging the net revenues of the city's combined water and sewer system to secure such bonds, prescribing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds. Ordinance 37 is revising Chapter 34 of the Code of Ordnances in regards to provisions for flood hazard reduction. Ordinance 37 is amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2019 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 38 is amending the 2019 Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget. Ordinance 39 is amending the 2019 budget for the general fund. Ordinance 40 is amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2019 general fund budget. Ordinance 41 is amending the 2019 general fund budget. Ordinance 42, amending the 2019 general fund budget. Ordinance 43 is adopting the 2019- Ordinance forty-three is adopting the two thousand nineteen Solid Waste Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance forty-four is amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, two thousand nineteen general fund budget. Ordinance forty-five is amending the two thousand nineteen Riverfront Development Fund Budget. Ordinance forty-six is annexation tag number eighteen dash four to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, by annexing the Gulf Bridge Commercial Subdivision Development in Section eight, Caddo Parish, Louisiana. Ordinance forty-seven is a serious ordinance pursuant to the General Bond Ordinance, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed one hundred million dollars of water and sewer revenue bonds, Series two thousand nineteen B, and water and sewer revenue bonds, Junior Lane, Series two thousand nineteen C, of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the General Bond Ordinance, providing, providing and confirming the sale of such bonds, pledging the net revenues of the system to secure such bonds, prescribing the form, certain terms and conditions of said bonds. Ordinance forty-eight is authorizing the city to close and restrict vehicular access to Lake Street from Commerce Street to Cypress Center. Ordinance forty-nine is to revise Chapter two, Article two, titled City Council of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, Code of Ordinances relative to the formal creation and codification of the Shreveport City Council Audit and Finance Committee and to reorganize sections and divisions within Article two.
Any discussion on councilman, please?
I have some discussion, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Councilman Bradford?
Mr. Chairman, several of these, I guess I missed paying attention to them when they was introduced at the last meeting, but there was some discussion regarding twenty-six, but I think, I think we got a resolve on that. Councilman Dixon, you, you, you postpone this twenty-seven to modify it. Can you, can you speak on the modifications?
Yes, Councilman Bradford, as, as the members of the council and the public will recall, the council had a discussion during the last meeting in which several members expressed concern about my proposal to require a competitive bid process for the selection of bond lawyers and other professionals who assist the city with the issuance of bonds. I agreed at the last meeting to separate that part of the ordinance from a less controversial portion, which simply requires the development of a new procurement policy. That policy has not been revised for many years, I understand, and is inconsistent and in some places difficult to understand and implement. So, Amendment one to ordinance twenty-seven would make that change. Amendment one would remove from this ordinance the competitive selection process for bond counsel and other professionals. My intention is to introduce that proposal as a separate ordinance at a later date. Amendment two, Councilman Bradford, would make a, a change that I think is long overdue to the business of the city. Municipalities across the country require mayors and executives to come to the council for approval of expenditures above a certain threshold, and that threshold varies from one city to the next. Houston, for example, requires city council approval, I understand, for expenditures in excess of fifty thousand dollars. My proposal, and this proposal would be made part of ordinance twenty-seven with Amendment two, is that in the City of Shreveport, the mayor should have to obtain the city council's approval to execute any contract that obligates the city to pay more than one hundred thousand dollars and to make any other expenditure in excess of one hundred thousand dollars. This will ensure that the public and that the members of this body are exercising their obligations of oversight over city expenditures and will make city government far more transparent than it has been to this point. My understanding of the, the present law is that the mayor has the authority to execute a contract, no matter how many years the contract may obligate the city, and no matter what amount of money the contract may obligate the city to pay. And the most, the most significant contract that is under consideration or perhaps has been executed, I don't have an up-to-date report, is the contract with the company that will manage the consent decree work for repairs to the water and sewer system throughout the city. That contract will pay Burns McDonald and its partner firm, Bon Ton, an estimated ten million dollars a year. A contract of that magnitude and others certainly merit the careful scrutiny of every member of this council, in addition to the mayor and his executive staff. And so, Mr. Chairman and Councilman Bradford, I hope that my colleagues will join me in supporting Amendment two. That will, that will put us on the road to greater transparency, which is something I think we all are in favor of. Thank you.
Councilman, thank you very much for that explanation. And I, I think I've said before that I'm not there yet, and for this reason, the charter was created and adopted and went to, in effect in nineteen seventy-eight, giving certain duties, responsibilities, and authorization to the mayor of Shreveport. And we've governed ourselves by that, by that ordinance, by that provision and ordinance. And while I think, I think transparency and oversight is very important, I, I, I don't at this time, unless there's something that I'm missing, that would, that will, that would cause us to be more, give more credence to the way, the way this mayor is transacting our business. I know there's been some issues and rumors and innuendos is flying like wildfire, but we're talking about changing the fundamental responsibilities of the mayor in governing this city. A, a new standard would be put in place, which, which would mean that this, 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 this standard would, would not have been given to the previous mayors. I, I, I hear you, I really, I really do, and I mean, in, 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 in most situations, things happen to cause such fundamental change, and I don't know if, 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 if some of the things that have happened since January first have rose to this level of fundamental change in the city operations. I don't know. I mean, I don't feel it. I saw some, I see some things, and I use myself as an example, like I say, in my, in my responsibilities at my, at my institution, where if, if, if there was some changes made to my job description, I would, I would want it to be reviewed and, and explained and, and all the components of, of, of decreasing my, my responsibility and my ability to, to, to keep my subordinates accountable as well. I'm just, I'm just not there yet, and I just feel that at this time, sixty-four point five percent of the voters of Shreveport elected a mayor who they felt had the confidence to execute the duties and responsibilities of that, of that position. And for us to circumvent that, I, I'm just not there yet. I, I may be there later on, but I'm not there yet, so I just, I just wanted to express that. Ms. Mayor, can you, can you weigh in on this for a minute?
Yeah. No, absolutely. Councilman Nicholson, I, I remain standing firm on the conflation with control and transparency. There is no administration that's been as transparent as mine when it comes to dollars, spending dollars. You can't go and find the budgets and the burn rate of dollars spent from any previous administration online, not only access to the council members, but also access to the pe, to the citizens of Shreveport. So, I think that's very much would be stepping into the realm of control, not just transparency with this particular one. We've been going through and reviewing our procurement policies, and that's something that we can self-correct on our own, in which we've already identified those gaps. We plan to do more of an overhaul in the next quarter, once we finish some of the closer objectives that we have to knock out. But, yeah, this would just be over cumbersome for the administration to approve every single contract that came in over a hundred thousand dollars. And, and another thing about Houston, there's various forms of government. Councilman Bradford has already referenced our strong mayor form of government. You can find about fifty to sixty percent of American cities that don't have a strong mayor system, but half of them do. And in a strong mayor system, this allows for versatility, well, agility, sorry, allows for agility in the executive branch, allows us to, you know, act, act pretty swiftly, and it also allows for accountability on one person rather than, than seven or eight, if it's you all and myself. So, yeah, the, the citizens voted me to be the executive branch, and I think that this would very much be a step on top of that executive branch to pass this, this ordinance. That's all I have, Chairman.
I want to, I want to, I want to reference something, but I need, I need you to, if you will, if you feel comfortable, this body at the last meeting voted to pay some invoices, and we voted not to pay one invoice, but you chose to pay the invoice. Why did you do that?
Wait, which, what's that, Councilman?
The false invoice.
On the, on the Monday meeting?
Yes.
There was a vote to not pay that particular invoice until we submitted a detailed invoice, correct? Wasn't that the stipulation of the vote?
To, 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 I, I, I thought that we wanted further information. You provided that information?
Yes, we provided that information, and we not only provided that information, but we also consulted with the city attorney on, on the matter as well. City Attorney, do you want to weigh in on this?
Sure. I looked at the statutes that applied, and because the two hundred and fifty dollar fee, and I apologize, I don't have it directly in front of me right now, but because essentially the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fee was a fee in lieu of commission, it was not something that required a traditional RFP, and therefore was within the purview of the mayor to go ahead and pay without any additional oversight, in the way that I understand law. I did advise administration that it would be prudent to go ahead and give that information to council, since you guys were requesting it, but I did not see any legal bar to him going ahead and paying that fee in lieu of commission.
Okay. And again, I, I, I'm at a, I'm at a disadvantage, I'm sorry. I have a forty-hour-a-week job, so I don't get all the information immediately, okay? But this is my, this is my point. I was, and I understand your, your explanation, but I was, I was, I was trying to see if you felt that putting a restriction on that, on that payment was unconstitutional in regards to the charter.
Yes.
You thought it was?
Yeah, absolutely, and I mean, the city attorney seconded it. But, again, out of courtesy, we still gave you the detailed invoice that was requested in that, that Monday meeting as well, so, yeah.
So, what I'm getting at, and this is my statement on this, and then I got, go to the next one, is that do you see Amendment two on ordinance twenty-seven as an infringement upon your constitutional rights as the mayor of the city?
Yes, Councilman, to be very clear, Amendment two is an infringement on the executive authority within the city charter.
So, if we, if we was to pass this, you would, you would ignore, you would ignore it on the grounds that you feel like the charter gives you the right to execute contracts?
Councilman, I have not thought forward on what we would ignore or not. I know that I am tasked with the responsibility of, of running the city, so my number-one duty is to make sure operations go forward. I'm not sure how much it would encumber us from doing our job, but I do know it would be debilitating with the degree of how many contracts we have to sign over a hundred thousand dollars to submit each to council. So, I, I really haven't thought that for, that far ahead on what it would do, but, um, for, for two reasons. One, the legal bars is there, the legal language seems to be very clear to us that it's impermissible, and the second one is, you know, operationally, we have to do some thinking on, on how exactly, how much it would impact me. We know it would have a grave impact, but, you know, how much we would able, we would be able to do atop of adhering to something like this.
I had talked to, spoken with several council, at least two councilmen, and I, I, I had, I had an alternative thought is that we would establish, say, Oversight Committee to really scrutinize the areas in which we would implement some, some degree of oversight. And my other thought was, and this is in regards to sort of what happened with the airport, in that we get an Attorney General's opinion, but, but I heard, I heard the city attorney say, well, Attorney General's opinion is just an opinion, so it may not give me the response that I, I was looking for. And that's where I'm at. I'm, that's why I'm really, 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 really concerned in that I'm a strong individual, and when somebody tried to free enter upon me, I, I, I do it. I don't readily lay down. I don't, I really don't. I mean, my, my history is that, so, I had said before that until the courts tell me otherwise, I may not abide by that, okay? And, and, and I don't want to go there, you know? I mean, twenty-five years ago, there was a guy who said, can we all just get along? And I, and I want us all just get along, you know, but, 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 but there's some, there's some, again, some things that are coming forth within this city, some very real anxiety about, about how the city is being governed. You, I want you to understand that, and, and we have to sometimes respond to those things. But at the same time, I, I, I just can't, without feeling very strongly, reduce authority and reduce, and reduce responsibility and reduce power. I, I would take it personally if it was done to me at my day job, and I don't know. I, I'm, I'm very, I'm complex, but we'll see. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, on that, on that issue.
And just to respond really, really quickly, Councilman Bradford, I understand, you know, that you say some anxiety is out there about our administration, and in transitions anxiety arises. I would like to point out that, you know, our administration is not encountering anything that previous administrations hadn't encountered. So, it's just, you know, I would chalk it up to the, to the transition, not to anything that's inherent with my administration. We're, we're more than capable to do our job if we're allowed to do that. So, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
All right.
I have several others on the board to speak. I didn't know if someone else wanted to speak regarding to this issue that we were speaking of, or if this is something different. If not, I'm gonna go.
Well, I'm, I'm speaking on this.
Chairman, I, I'm first on the board.
No, no, so I'm making sure that we're all on this issue here.
Mr. Fuller, if you're speaking on that, so.
Okay. Councilman Fuller?
Mr. Thompson, didn't we pass a resolution on that Monday meeting asking the mayor, would you please remind us what we passed?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but the council did not approve the expenditure of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars until additional information was presented to the council, which would justify the fee.
Mr. Green left, and Mr. Bowman is staying, and the others voted in the affirmative.
Correct.
Yeah. Ms. Kribb, you didn't hear that? You don't remember that?
Yeah, I hear it. I heard it.
We asked the mayor not to pay the two hundred and fifty thousand.
I understand.
We passed a resolution which is binding and legal, right?
It is, but prior.
So, you totally ignored what we did?
I didn't ignore anything. What I did was, before you voted, I informed you of the same analysis that I just repeated for the record, and advised you all that, from the way I read it, he could still go ahead and pay regardless of what the resolution said.
Okay. And Mr. Bradford, you remind us about the sixty-four percent, and I remind you that was a lower, low voter turnout. So, I mean, we have to have rules and regulations that will be followed if we pass them as a council. Don't, we're the laughing stock in town. Don't, we're the laughing stock in town. So, I don't understand, if we asked not to pay the deal, why it was paid, Mayor? Why did you write the check? FedEx the check? That's what everybody's saying on the street, "You FedExed it so fast."
Well, that's not true, because even when, when council members were making comments that we paid it, we still hadn't paid it. We gave you the information first, and as the city attorney just told you now, and told you prior to that vote, what the city charter says, and that's what we abided by. In that case, we had, we went with the law, and we, again, these people rendered services to the city, and we owed.
We're, we're gonna ask for Attorney General's opinion on that, too, because we have a disagreement with you on that.
I'm, I'm A-OK with that, Councilman Flure.
All right. Uh, Councilman Boucher?
I am extremely disappointed in the, in the tone. I think the first time I ever met with the mayor, I said, "I wish we could hash this out," prior to getting up here on this horseshoe and arguing with each other. Um, I, I do personally, um, one question I asked Ms. Krill in the Monday meeting was if we pay this two hundred and fifty thousand dollar to Frost Insurance, and from all accounts, we were told on that day by the staff, by the CAO, that she felt there may have been some misinformation, I'm not gonna say misled, I know that's a big talking point that we're using, but that, that we didn't really understand the, the level of, of coverage that we had. If, if that's the case, um, it's concerning to me that we wouldn't wait a week or so to, to, to pay the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Back to what my question to Ms. Krill was, if we pay this, and let's say that, um, you come in, you talk to, uh, to Ms. Jones, y'all, y'all feel like that something was not right, and y'all go out and do, uh, some due diligence and find somebody else to, to write this insurance, which, which is a possibility, I would think that that could, could possibly happen, if, if the level of, I don't wanna call it distrust, but the level of, um, what was said in the meeting made me feel like that possibly there was not a very good understanding between the, the broker or their agent of record and the CAO. That's, that's what I got, and, I mean, I guess we could all hear one thing or another. But the only reason I ask is because Ms. Krill couldn't answer the question as to if we pay the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, can we get it back, or can we get a portion of it back? I feel like that it was a very fluid situation. I said this, uh, in the meeting, that I felt like that, uh, paying that might be adding gasoline to a fire that's already going. And, um, I, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Flure. The resolution was passed, and I would have liked to have seen the administration come to each member of the, of the council and say, "Listen, this is why I'm paying it. I don't think y'all are right, but this is why I'm gonna pay it," instead of us passing it out up here, and really, I mean, it, it looks like, um, things are starting to look kinda like a, you know, just, just a circus, and, and I don't, I don't wanna be involved in that. I want us to have an open line of communications. Uh, I've, I've expressed this to the chairman, we, we've met and talked. I want us to have an open line of communications, because I really feel like, you do have a mandate, sixty-something percent, regardless of how many people voted. I have a mandate, seventy-three percent. Um, Councilwoman Fuller, she had seventy-four percent. We all have a mandate up here, and I think we all, we all campaigned on, uh, transparency, and, and I just wish that there was better communications. If, if this was paid to Frost, I wish that we had better communications, because it was clear that the majority of this council, who is a legislative branch, did not wanna pay the two hundred and fifty thousand. And, uh, I don't wanna say that it's an insult, because I respect Ms. Krill and what her opinion is, however, we didn't feel like it was in the best interest of the city, and I wish that the administration would've just held up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can I make a clarification? Um, the invoice has not been paid. I sent an email to Mr. Thompson last week. I copied the city attorney, providing them with the detail that we received from Frost. And in that email, it stated that here is the detail requested by the council, unless advised otherwise by the city attorney, we will proceed with payment. I talked with the city attorney, and, and she advised that we send the information forwarded along to you all. Um, I've consulted with the mayor, we will forward you all as a courtesy, the, the detail. Um, but we are uncomfortable withholding this invoice, because we did receive services from Frost, and as the council discussed at the meeting on last Monday, that, you know, the administration needed to go out and to secure an additional coverage for the single occurrence limit, and we did that also. Um, so there's no additional fees that are being added on to them also doing that additional work for the city, um, in addition to the further quotes that they're working on right now.
And, and Councilman Boucher, it, it's not just waiting a week. We've already waited several weeks with this. This came up in the previous council meeting, that's the reason why we had the emergency meeting, and the conversation started over email about two weeks prior to that. So we've, we've waited lo, a long time with this, not just a week.
With all due respect, Mayor, and Ms. Phil, I mean, Ms. Jones, we, we received, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Thompson, we received these invoices about twenty minutes before the, the last meeting. Is that, is that correct, twenty or thirty minutes?
Well, we had, we had some of the invoices, but I think changes were being made up until a few minutes before the meeting.
I just, um, and, and I understand, I, I, I wait to get paid all the time from, from my job, and I understand that if somebody has done the work, but, um, I, I also feel like that the council made it fairly clear that we didn't wanna pay that particular invoice, and I, I wish that we could be on the same page with that until we get a level of, um, confidence in, in what we're doing, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Uh, Councilman Green?
Michael.
Did you have, were you up to speak on the same?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilman Duncan.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd just like to, uh, state my understanding of the insurance ordinance that five members of this council passed recently. Five members of the council approved an ordinance which requires, uh, the executive to obtain our approval for the expenditure of any funds to procure insurance. Uh, my view is that that ordinance requires approval both to pay premiums and to pay fees that are paid in lieu of commissions, because those are, uh, those are payments made to procure insurance. Uh, the resolution that the council passed, again, by a vote of five during our special meeting last week, confirmed that the council, at this time, uh, was not giving its approval to pay the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar invoice that it received from Frost Bank. And I'm, I'm happy to have, uh, further conversations with the mayor and his staff, uh, outside of this public meeting, and, and perhaps that would be more productive, but what I wanna know is how we got into a situation where our new agent sold us fifty million dollars per occurrence property insurance, when we have multiple properties around the city that are worth far more than that? For example, the combined value of the convention center and hotel approaches a hundred forty million dollars. If a tornado or another storm were to hit that building, uh, if we were to have a fire there, or a gas explosion, or suffer any other loss, uh, we could have a claim of a hundred-plus million dollars that was covered for only fifty million dollars. Independent Stadium is valued, uh, in the right neighborhood of ninety million dollars, I understand. Again, if we were to suffer a serious loss at Independent Stadium, and we had only fifty million dollars of coverage, we would not have enough coverage. It's like having your house insured for a fraction of its value. I mean, I've had homeowner's insurance for all the years that I'm owned homes, for the past twelve or fifteen years. Uh, I've never had a significant claim, my house has never burned down, uh, but I keep paying for the insurance year after year, because there's a risk of something terrible happening, and that's the whole point of having insurance. And if you have insurance with per occurrence limits that are way lower than the value of individual properties that the city owns, then you're putting the city at unacceptable risk. I appreciate the administration taking prompt action to correct that deficiency. After the special meeting last week, I understand that we purchased additional insurance that now provides per occurrence limits of three hundred million dollars. Uh, that is substantially more than any individual asset in the city is worth. I, I remain concerned about the fact that we paid hundreds of thousands of dollars more this year for our property insurance than we did for our property insurance last year that provided more coverage. The internal auditor has, uh, an investigation pending. I expect that she will issue a, a report in the next month or so, and I hope that her report sheds light on the situation. I, I will also say that the initial assessment that the city was underinsured with the fifty million dollar policy didn't come from this council or any individual member, it came from the internal auditor. Uh, she is a well-qualified, apolitical public servant who has held that position for two decades. Uh, and, you know, I, and I think the other members of the council trust her judgment and her extensive experience implicitly, so when she sounded the alarm, when she came to us and said, "We've got a problem here," we listened and we took action, as I think we were obligated to do. Concerning Amendment Two, which would impose a one hundred thousand dollar threshold beyond which the mayor, uh, would have to come to the council for approval, I recognize and respect that that ordinance, if enacted, would be a significant change to the way the city has done business. I will tell you that I would sponsor that ordinance regardless of who was mayor. I do not think any individual should have authority to execute contracts on behalf of the city up to an unlimited amount without council approval. The council is the governing authority of the city, the mayor can expend the public's money only with our approval, and that's what we do every year when we enact a budget. We approve those expenditures. Uh, if, if a majority of the council is not comfortable with a one hundred thousand dollar threshold, uh, then my suggestion would be, uh, let's decide on some threshold beyond which we are going to take the time to review contracts and expenditures. If we don't think it should be one hundred thousand dollars, what about five hundred thousand dollars? Or what about a million dollars? I mean, the city is about to execute, or perhaps has, I don't know, because we're not part of the decision process at this point, a contract that will pay the manager of the consent decree work ten million dollars a year. Ten million dollars a year, and that entity will manage a hundred million dollars a year of construction projects throughout this city. That's the biggest capital improvements project the city has ever undertaken. We will spend more than a billion dollars in all. And so if, if one hundred thousand dollars is too great an infringement on the mayor's authority in the judgment of the council, uh, then I suggest that we work together to agree on some higher threshold that we think is appropriate. And, and finally, on that issue, I, I will, I want this to be clear. Uh, I, I, I understand that some members of the council don't think we should impose any limits on the amount of money that the executive can spend without our specific approval. Uh, but there is no argument to be made that the charter prohibits us from doing that, okay? We are the governing authority of the city, money cannot be spent without our authority, and so, we, while we may choose as a body not to enact a restriction of this nature, uh, and, and while I recognize that members acting in good faith may come to different conclusions about what is appropriate at this juncture, uh, it would be a mistake to act or fail to act based on a belief that the charter prohibits us from imposing this oversight. It, it does not, we have the power to do that as the city council. Thank you.
And just to, I mean, to respond to that, I gotta push back on a couple of things you talked about, about our assets being uninsured. The, again, let's not conflate total insured for all of our assets, assets and the single occurrence covers that we have, and also, let's not point to the agents of record as if paying more this year was any fault of their own at all. AIG, the insurers, the same company that the previous, uh, agents of records use, sent a message to, sent us, uh, mail a month before these policies changed, talking about the market. So even if we would've kept the same people, it would've been because of the market, there was just no reason for us to do that. And, um, I, I absolutely respect the append, uh, opinions of the, um, of our internal, um, audit department, but it would've been great if we could've saw the, the report prior to council, as, as the council did, uh, so that we weren't able to, to look at that report as some members of council did prior to, to that Monday meeting. And if we would have, we could've reacted as well, and could've had better answers for you at the meeting. And that's not necessarily collaboration, uh, when we, when we go into meetings like that.
Was, Mr. Chair?
Councilman Boucher?
Was there, was there not a meeting between, uh, the auditor and Ms. Jones?
Yes, there was.
Okay. Prior, in the...
Yeah, there was a meeting between us.
And pretty much everything, I mean, I wasn't in the meeting, Mr. Thompson, I believe you were, um, was everything discussed that was discussed in that meeting on Monday?
There was some, there was information, um, that, that we discussed that was relative to, um, having the, the proper information on the legislation. Um, and as I mentioned in Monday's meeting, this is when they provided me copies of the actual policies. I think what the mayor is saying, that we did not have an opportunity to review the actual presentation to be able to address the questions that were raised in it.
But the information in that presentation was revealed?
Correct.
No, we didn't have, we did not have the, the, we did not have the, the privilege of being able to review the presentation, is what he's saying.
What? Councilman Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One is, it, it seems as though now we wanna hire the, the state attorney general to be a part of the city to get his opinion. And of course, an opinion is an opinion. Um, it's kinda like, um, United States Attorney General made a, made an opinion of four hundred pages, and his opinion came out, and it came down to about four pages. Then after we get the full report, then it's something different, but my question to Mr. Thompson, or to the city attorney, or whoever, I, I was not here during the time that this charter was brought about, but did the citizens vote on this charter, or did the city fathers just came up with something and just put it together? How did it come about?
No, the citizens voted on the charter, but the question is whether or not the charter prohibits the council from making the kinds of decisions that it, it is proposing here. And I don't read anything in the charter that prohibits that.
And so, if in fact, basically every other meeting that we are going to go through the city charter, if the mayor, his staff, or whoever makes a mistake, or, or something happened, then I find us going through the charter, picking out different points that we could prohibit, um, the mayor's strong form of government. This is, the strong form of government was here when I got here, even back in ninety-four. But every week, for whatever reason, somewhere or another, we are picking the city charter apart, and I don't think that that's what we ought to be doing. And when you talk about me coming up here every day or all night to approve a hundred thousand dollars per whatever, I, I don't see no way for us to be able to do that. It would do like what we're doing today, we just dealing with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Of course, we can't even agree on two hundred and fifty as to whether they ought to get paid and whatever. What if it's my friend that needs to get paid a hundred thousand dollars, but he's not the friends of whoever else? Then he's not gonna get paid, uh, she's not gonna get paid. And I think as long as we keep the, the tick out of politics, then I think everything would move just fine. But I just, I just, I just wanted to throw it out for the record. If we're gonna change the charter, then we ought to take it back to the citizens, say, "Look, we want a strong council form of government, and not a strong mayor form of government," and just basically see what the citizens say, and then that will put us where the citizens would have this, the way the city should run. But it, it's been operating like this for however long, but I don't think we ought to be changing it at this particular juncture. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Right. Ms., Ms. Krill, are you still on speaker?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just wanna make a general comment, um, just so that the record is clear, um, because the, the implication has been made on more than one... has been made on more than one occasion, but I was confirmed unanimously, as I've been reminded on more than one occasion, to provide sound and objective legal advice to council, to the mayor, to the departments of the city, to commissioners, boards, et cetera. Period. That's what I was confirmed to do. That's what I have been charged to do. That's what I've been commissioned to do. Having said that, just like I answered the administrative questions regarding the $250,000 fee, I knew that that could potentially cause an issue, or at least cause a reason, something to be discussed amongst the governing body. That is why I presented that information to you all prior to the vote, so that everybody would be informed of the information. I just wanted to be clear, because there's an implication of the opposite, and that is this: I am not pro-mayor. I am not pro-council. I am pro-the law, and I'm pro-my bar license. And I am pro-doing what I believe is necessary to get this job done, as well as that is what I have directed everyone who is under my chain of command. The suggestion or the implication that I am advising the mayor or administration or anybody else, for that matter, to do anything other than what the law says for them to do is completely not true, and I just want that to be clear for the record. Having said all of that, I will tell you, I take absolutely no issue with anybody seeking an attorney general's opinion on any decision I've made or any advice that I've given, because I wholeheartedly stand by the decisions and the advice that I have rendered since the very day that I sat in this chair. And I can tell you that it has not and it will not change how I do my job and how I direct other people to do my job, but I just wanna make sure that the record is clear on those implications. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crell. Ms. Jones, are you still up to speak now?
I've already addressed my questions.
Councilman Butcher.
I was on to speak about something else.
Okay.
If anybody else has anything else.
Anyone else on this particular, Councilman Nicholson or Bravon on this particular, or is it something else?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Nicholson.
I'm sorry.
I yield, Mr. Chair.
No, no, I just wanted to be clear that, and I didn't intend to open up what is opened up, but that's the way I am. I'm transparent, and I feel that if we can't discuss our problem, then we can't solve our problem. I think my concern is, and I'm hearing two different versions, my concern is not a limit of $100,000 or $200,000. My limit is, are we violating or are we circumventing something that we can find ourselves being challenged? That's what I, that's my concern, okay? If we give a limit, Councilman, you may, you feel strongly that we within, we within our preview to do, to do what you have suggested.
I do, Councilman Bravon.
The mayor doesn't feel that way. And if we pass this, I certainly would not want action contrary to our legislation. I would feel bad about that. And I wanna be clear, and I don't know how we can get clear, I guess we find ourselves somewhere in court, but I don't wanna see that either. But I'm just saying, I want us to come together and reason together and say, okay, what can we do in a reasonable way to avoid any type of discontent within this body and the mayor? I mean, I said last meeting that, you know, my wife and I have been married a long time, and we hardly ever go to bed angry. But every now and then, we don't go to bed for several days. We work out, we work out our anger. So, so I'm just hoping we can work this out and move forward. That's my concern, Councilman Nicholson. I believe in oversight. I believe in accountability. But I also believe in the law, and I believe in adhering to the area in which my responsibility is and your responsibility is. You feel that, see, in the old days, in the old days, when we passed the budget, we move on and let administration administer the budget. You know, we don't usually come back and say, okay, you know, we allocated, you know, $50 million for this, you know, y'all, that's y'all's responsibility. But now we wanna come back and say, okay, you know, give us, give us every aspect of how this money's gonna be spent. That's not the way I usually deal with budgets. Once the authority have been given to execute the budget, you know, let those that are charged with that responsibility do their job. Unless, again, unless there's reason for us to put in new provisions and new ordinances. So, again, I did not intend for it to go here, but I'm happy, because it was a healthy discussion, and I think it gave us some views that we see where we need to work those out. And I'm gonna be comfortable and trust that we're gonna work those out, because I don't wanna see us here, every meeting, going into the detail of various aspects of how we govern the city. So, we're gonna get somewhere.
Would you yield, Councilman Bravon?
Yes, sir.
Are you missing the Joe Shine Cedric Glover days? Is that what you're longing for?
No, sir, I'm not longing for those. I'm not longing for those. But if you don't, if you did not understand what the councilman was saying, there was those days that it was a constant bickering and disrespecting, and it was embarrassing to this city, and we don't need that. We don't, we don't need, we don't need that. And I know, I know I'm hearing what you're hearing. I'm seeing what we're hearing. Social media is eating us up, you know, which, which we have to sometimes turn a deaf ear to. But at the same time, it's out there and making us feel like we are, we are, we are kittens. We don't, we don't wanna be kittens. So we're gonna work this out. And, Mr. Chairman, if we finish with this item, I wanna go to the next item. And I think Councilman Butcher had the floor first.
Right. I just, just to add on to that, I think I'm somewhat like Ms. Crell. I have a good relationship, I think, at one time before the election with Adrian, then Adrian Perkins, now Mayor Perkins. And I don't want anyone to take for granted that just because we had that relationship, I stood beside him then and I still support the mayor now. And if I see something that is wrong, I won't, you know, I spoke to Councilman Butcher about this also, if I see something's wrong or I think something's wrong, I'm gonna speak to it. But I don't wanna sit here and seem like we are piecemealing the process as far as limiting or taking away the mayor's power. That's our mayor's power of authority at that particular time. And I also, if we're gonna go that route, then I think we should leave it up to the public and let them vote and state whether that's the route that they think that the city should go in. That's, that's, that's numbed up in the nutshell. That's, that's all I had to say. Moving on to the next, Councilman Butcher.
Mr. Mayor, number 26, the deputy chief position, are you opposed to table on that until you make your chief's decision?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. I'm gonna move to table it where it's not on here every time.
All right.
Consider delaying it if that's okay with you.
Okay, so we'll postpone to July?
We'll table it till, and represent it in July.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. That's 26.
Yeah, 26.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Gray.
Councilman Butcher, I'd just like to warn you that once I table something, it was tabled for four years. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Bravon.
Thank you, Councilman Gray.
It was my final, it was my firecracker ordinance, and they tabled it for four years. This, I think, is still on the table.
Mr. Chairman, I want to, I wanna discuss 44, but before I discuss 44, can the CO, there's several, several more than usual amendments to the budget. Is there any, and all of them different, is there any reason why there are so many this time around? Or just...
Not in particular. We've got, a lot of them are companions. Like, for example, the general fund budget for solid waste is a companion to the one for the enterprise fund. We have a companions for, let's see, we have another one that is for SPAR. There's, one is on the capital side and one is on the operating side. Is there one in particular that you have a question about?
No, no, I haven't reviewed them, but I just, I mean, I see we moving money around, but some of it is new money coming in and making those, making those ratifications, modifications.
Sure. I mean, we do wanna be diligent. If there's something that needs to be, you know, cleaned up, or if we need to acknowledge funds that were received or money that's being moved around, you know, we don't like to hold those. We wanna go ahead and make sure that we get those before you all to approve.
Okay. I understand. I mean, it's governing. So, in regards to 44, I want the chief to be on standby, chief, in a minute. Okay. Mr. Bowman, you sponsored this legislation, and I missed it at the previous meeting.
Okay.
You know, I got calls, I don't know if anybody else got calls, and they feel like this is...
Lot of bail called, a lot of us, I believe.
Yeah, okay, well. Some of the board members feel like this is a hostile, a hostile move. But you don't see it that way?
No, sir. This is, this is how this came about. It was brought up once before in these lines from Councilman Butcher, and after I had a meeting with, well, I was in a meeting with, in my district, and we were discussing some ways that we can cut back on some of the spending from the city, which has been a big issue and a big conversation for a lot of us to do. So, I brought up that one way, we get caught up in pleasing everybody, and that's something that we won't be able to do. If that was the case, then all of us or one of us would've won by 100%, not 70 fold, not 60 fold, not 50, 100. So, we can't please everybody. But, and, and, I saw where we were 260, I'm sorry.
You didn't have enough money.
I won by 100%. I think, I appreciate that.
Talking to you, you're less than 100%. Go ahead.
I'm leaving that out. But we're paying 260,000-plus dollars in the school crossing guards. I understand some people say, well, that's, that's a public safety issue. That's everyone's issue. Those are all our kids, it's just not the city of street poor kids. And they're going to the school. They're going to everyone's school. So, I was thinking that if we can reduce costs from there, the school board pays $11,960 for this. The city pays $260,800 for this. And in that discussion, a lot of people did not know that the city sponsored, paid more, the more of that money. As to say that the city, they didn't even think the city paid any of that. They thought it was the school board that paid it. So, that's how this came about. It is, it is public safety, but at the same time, they have, if that's the case, I remember when at one time I had security guards from the school who crossed, crossed the street a long time ago. If it's a, if there's a problem with budgeting or monetary process, so, a problem. So anyway, that's how that came about, Councilman.
Mr. Chairman, would you yield for me? I'm glad you brought that up, because talking about crossing guards, I never experienced crossing guard in Allen Dale. They probably had crossing guard back in Councilman Bravon's day, they probably, and I know they, but we have so many kids that ride the bus now.
Yes, sir.
I thought state law was mandatory, that they had to provide a bus in every neighborhood and they said, "Ride it." I just wonder if, I wanna compliment you for having the courage. As Lady McVlass said, "Screw your courage to the sticky plate." And that's exactly what you've done here by bringing this forward and letting us have a good discussion about it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate that, Councilman.
Stay at the floor?
No, I'm not finished. In my day, and I prefer my day, we had, we had, we had crossing guards, but we did not have security guards at the schools. I'd rather have the crossing guards. So my question, Chief, will you come down for a minute, please?
Mr. Chairman, why the chief is coming? How much do they pay for crossing guard?
We pay $260,800.
No, I mean per, I mean per.
No, he's gonna answer that. I'm asking him that now, Councilman. Okay. In regards to the crossing guards, what is your department's responsibility for the crossing guards, other than, just give me the total responsibility?
So, we have 92 school crossing guards that are unclassified, part-time employees.
Other police department?
Other police department.
Okay.
So they're supervised by one of the sergeants in our traffic enforcement division.
Okay.
Eighty-two, on a daily basis, work four hours a day, two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon. We have 10 fill-ins for those instances where someone's sick, injured, et cetera. I don't have a list in front of me, but I believe we have crossing guards assigned to 30, 31, 32 schools, anywhere from a single crossing guard serving at school up to five at some schools.
So, so this is my question. Have you evaluated the need of crossing guards in certain, in certain locations? I've seen locations where there's a, there's a, there's a crossing guard stationed on, at the corner of Malum, and I think it's Missouri, and I don't see the need for that. I mean, there's no school in proximity of that. So I'm asking you, have you reviewed where the placements are and if they are needed?
So, to answer your question, that's how most of this came up. It was actually during last year's budget cycle, when I was preparing the budget, the supervisor of the crossing guards came to my office and had some questions about the crossing guards, and I said, "Well, let's just pull the contract." That's most things that you look at, because the money that is paid by the school board referenced a contract. Couldn't find the contract, the police department couldn't find the contract in finance division, and reached out to Karen, Assistant Attorney, and realized it was not a contract. This is just something that we've been doing for, the story I got was back to Chief Gruber days. There's no contract. And that's when we started looking at, do we even need to provide the service through the police department? And so this has kinda been an ongoing conversation, but to directly answer your question, I have been told there are some areas that we question the need for a crossing guard, but we're concerned about the liability of, because there are one or two children at every area, sometimes more than that, but in few areas, one or two children that cross the road at dangerous intersections. And the concern is, if we remove the crossing guard that's been there for 40 years and a child gets struck, first of all, how horrible would you feel? But secondly, what type of liability would there be? Because we've had a crossing guard there for 40 years.
Yeah. Well, I think, and this is my position, Councilman Bowman, when we start talking about reducing the budget, going after this crossing guards is picking low-hanging fruit. There are a lot of areas that I see that we can, we can go out there to reduce, but $75,000 is, is, is not where I would start. I mean, it's a start, but it's not where I could start, without, without a conversation with the school board. I think a conversation with the school board should precede this move, only because they need to know what would be expected of them if we start reducing our allotment to providing this service. It's not a, it's, you know, I mean, we, you said it, it's, when you start, I mean, we're not talking about them taking, taking over the streets. We're talking about them supplementing something toward this, this, this service, you know, whereas now they're paying $12,000, and you're saying, "Let's let them pay $100,000," or something like that. And I'm not opposing to that, but I'm saying that we need, we need a conversation. We need to, the superintendent needs to be aware that we are about to, and then, we only got 30 days left, 30, 40 days left in this school year, and I think it'll be a good opportunity for us to put this on the agenda as we prepare our next budget, and let them know, so they'll be clear, what's expected of them in regards to this endeavor. Because I think once we get to the budget season, I see a lot of chopping going on. You know, there's a lot of, I'm saying a lot, there are some areas that I would suggest that we can, we can, we can serve. So, but you feel that staffing in the security guard area is adequate, or is it, or is it not negotiable? not negotiable to reduce any, any sites?
Are you saying crossing guard or security guard? You just said security.
Crossing guards.
Okay.
No, security guards, we, we, we-
I'm just making sure we're on the same page.
But anyway, I'm just saying that, I'm talking crossing guards positioned in areas where there are very small, uh, traffic. That can be, that can be looked at over the next several-
Yeah, I, I think the conversation could be had, but to go along with it, it's been my understanding that requests have been made to the supervisor to, to utilize his crossing guards in additional areas. So, so one side of it, you've got supervisor saying, I don't know that we're being adequately used at, at such and such intersection. But then you have the school or some parents saying, yeah, but we sure would like a crossing guard at this location. And that's kind of what we initially started looking at this, is, is for some direction. I'm not against crossing guards, but we, we do need some clear direction on it. And it was, when we started talking about ways in which we could reduce the budget, this was one of the ways that we've listed for years in our budget to the CIO, is my understanding. Last year was the first year I produced the budget, and we listed it last year.
Yeah.
Ms. Jones, or, or at the time Chief Crawford asked, what if you had to reduce the budget by one percent, how would you do that? And we listed this quarter million dollars as, as part of that.
And Chief, again, I, 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 I have no, well, I do have a part. I mean, when you look at the totality of any department, especially police, which is one of our highest, highest revenue departments, going after, going after the, the crossing guards, where, where, whereas in some circles, they are saying that we are top-heavy in office people. I mean, you know, I mean, I would look at, you know, not just look at the feet, I started looking up the waist up and saying, okay, where, where can we reduce costs there as well? So, so I'm, I'm going to ask the Councilman, Chair, if he would consider tabling this, unless, unless, do you have any conversation with security of, of the school board, or anybody from the school board in regards to how you, how you, how you man your, your, these crossing guards? No. I think that conversation needs to be had, Mr. Chairman.
I have no problem with having it. I can postpone this and have a conversation, but I don't feel comfortable postponing it until the next budget cycle.
No, 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 no. I think, I think, I think once we, once we get out of this school year, which we, you know, I'm saying postpone until we have, have a meeting, the, the chief and whoever, mayor, staff, and, and let's get an understanding. And I'm, I'm saying, let's propose to them that they need to take a, a larger responsibility of providing resources to this endeavor. I think, I think, I think, I think, I think there need to be more for them. And, and, but I think we need to let them know what is expected of them before we cut. And I, and, and, and because school is only thirty, forty days away, we won't need them through the summer in some instances. And that'll give us a chance to reduce or make modifications or make the changes that we think we need to make. And then say, okay, we need, if we're going to spend two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, you need to pay a percentage of that, more than twelve thousand dollars. I'm, 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 I'm supportive of that.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Knuckles.
My comment comes from the different.
Councilman Boach, you was on this?
Uh, yeah. As, as far as a crossing guard, uh, goes, I, we brought this up in the Public Safety Committee meeting. I, I felt like that we would have some more discussion when the next meeting was. And I, and I kind of thought we'd probably wait, like Councilman Bradford said, until the end of the school year to, to move on this. But, but I, I will have to say, I'm, I'm in agreeance with, uh, Councilman Bowman. This is almost an ancient thing that we're dealing with here with no contract, and we need to, there has got to be some areas that, that we have too many crossing guards and areas that we don't have enough. And I think that the school board and the city, uh, the police department need to work together, uh, to come up with, with where we actually do need these crossing guards and where we don't. I think I said in the Public Safety Committee meeting, I was sitting in a corner one day, and it was four blocks away from any school, and the crossing guard sat there the whole time and didn't cross one child. So, we, we've got to, uh, you know, there's one at Uriah, Pennsylvania, and, uh, the closest school is Arthur Circle, and that's, that's four blocks away. So, I, I just think we need to look at this. I just, um, I'm with, uh, Councilman Bowman. I don't want to delay this too long because I, I don't want to wait all the way to the next budget cycle. But I don't have a problem delaying it until the next school year. But I think that, um, if we do it in the Public Safety Committee, or in, in just regular meetings with some school board members and, and, uh, Superintendent Gory, I, I think we need to kind of work together before we just, we, we just pull it out from underneath them. So, uh, but I am in support of the ordinance otherwise. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, that's it. Not on this one. All right.
No, I'm on the board.
Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, um, I know we couldn't do it on the city side, but on the school board side, before they cut all this out, um, would you look out for Councilman Flurry and I for the crossing guard? We're about at that age, so before y'all doing the changing on that, uh, we'd kind, we'd kind of like to be, I'm just saying, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
Councilman Knuckles, your turn.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a question regarding ordinance thirty-nine, and I, I don't know to whom this should be directed, perhaps Ms. Jones. Are we, are we increasing the, the annual salary of our city court judges with this ordinance?
No. Um, this is an ordinance that they do every year. And basically, it's counting for the money that they're contributing from their discretionary funds. So, they give us, um, some amount of money, and then an equal amount of expenditures to offset, to, um, account for what's coming from their discretionary.
This, this is just ru- ru- routine business?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Councilman Boach?
Uh, that's-
That was it?
Yeah, that's it.
And Green was also, all right. No table legislation to be removed from today, is that correct, Mr. Thompson?
I'm sorry?
Was there anything else to be, was there any legislation to be removed today, tabled?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Earlier, I, I looked at it in the audience, and I saw, uh, two individuals, and I didn't know if the mayor, uh, and his administration would mind if those two gentlemen were to come up, if the council had a, a poll, mostly council, and everyone was okay with them coming up. We had, um, Mr. Savannah and Mr. Mero, one for the Assistant Superintendent of Street and Drainage, Assistant to the Superintendent of Streets and Drainage, and one for Assistant Director of Recreation and Athletic Department. Uh, Mr. Mero and Mr. Savannah. Mr. Savannah. If you, um, if you don't mind, step up first, to know if someone had any, to state the position and what you- Assistant to the Superintendent of Streets and Drainage?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilman Bradford.
Savannah, uh, you, you employed with the city for how long?
Thirty years.
Thirty years?
Thirty.
So, you know the ins and outs?
Fifteen in streets and fifteen in water.
We need, we need experience. What do you, what do you see your position as assistant to the, um, superintendent in being as relates to improving, improving that department? What do you offer?
I offer, uh, I have fifteen years in streets and drainage. That was my first job that I had. Coming out of high school, at the age of eighteen, I started with the JTPA program. And I know streets and drainage like the back of my hand, and we have some great individual guys out there too. Great employers that they need, uh, some guidance, supervision, and more so respect.
In regards to productivity, do you see areas in which productivity could be, could be better?
Oh, yes, yes, of course.
And savings would be applied?
Tremendously, uh, for our mowing, our maintenance costs, our tour and cost, uh, we could basically do that in-house if we have the right employers.
You going to propose that?
Yes, yes. I, I, I see it every day.
And that's, and that's the areas in which we're going to have to look at, Mr. Chairman, as we proceed in looking at cost savings. I mean, I mean, every department should be able to recommend an area in which we can, we can save money. I, I think even, even the city, city attorney's office, I mean, we paying a lot of money out in legal. But that's not something we're going to play with. But I'm, but I'm saying on the streets where we can take responsibility and share responsibility. I mean, we can share responsibility with, uh, SPAR, with property standards. I mean, because you, a lot of, a lot of this is duplicated stuff, but everybody work within their own structure. Is that right?
In the past, the, uh, SPAR, streets, uh, wardens who, they had been operating separate, from my, from my knowledge.
Sure. I, I mean, then they was combined, and then they was separated again.
Right. And from my knowledge and for what I can bring to the table, I want to work closer to property standard. Because property standards and, uh, streets and drains, they work hand in hand.
Yeah. Well, Savannah, I, you know, I, I know your family and, uh, good, 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 good work ethics. And I'm on trust that you would bring all that experience and help us, and help us do the right thing in, 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 in serving the city, providing the service, and saving us money and by being more productive. Okay?
Okay. Councilman?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Just on, piggybacking on Councilman Bradford, did, did you all have a tree? You remember a, a tree cutting service when, in-house, when you were in streets and drainage, no?
Oh, yes, yes, we had, uh, Foster.
Okay. So, would you look into, just think about looking or bringing that up to seeing if we can start that back up again? We've been contracting a lot of that out, and I would just like to see that duty performed back in-house as much as we can, anyway.
From my understanding, Councilman, uh, they already have guys that already have armored license.
Yes, sir.
And you could, you literally, literally ask your guys to cut the trees, the employees.
That's what I'm looking at. All right. Thank, Councilman Flurry.
Uh, Mr. Savannah, thank you for the willingness to serve again in the city. I, I asked one favor, one commitment from you. There's a street up there in Councilman Bradford's district, uh, that, uh, Mr. Thompson and I took a ride along with him up. I didn't get no ice cream that day, but we got to see a ditch, uh, Mayor Glover's mother's house. Uh, has never been cleaned out in three mayor, uh, terms of mayors.
Joe Louis.
Uh, do you remember what street that was, Councilman?
Joe Louis.
Joe Louis. Joe Louis. Would you promise, would you promise me today that you will at least look at it by cleaning that poor woman's ditch out?
I am from that area.
Because she deserves it.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Savannah. Appreciate you coming in today and your services.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know why Councilman Flurry always picking on me. I, I prompted my ice cream. We just forgot.
Y'all aren't supposed to have ice cream, Chairman. Point of order, you're not supposed to have ice cream because of your beatis. I'm, I'm going to tell, I'm going to tell the Mrs. Flurry and Mrs. Bradford on both of y'all.
Because of his wife?
Beatis. The beatis. The sugar.
That only applies to his at home. When you're at home, we get everything.
She's trying to be nice.
No, for real this time.
Mr. Mero, how you doing today, sir?
I'm doing pretty good myself. And this is for Assistant Director of Recreation and Athletic Division in SPAR.
Councilman Fuller, you still up?
Yeah, I wanted to, to be Councilman Bradford too at this time.
Okay.
Hello, how are you doing today, sir?
I'm doing fine.
Tell us a little bit about yourself and your background.
Originally, I'm from New Orleans, Louisiana. I've been living here from, in Shreveport for twenty years. I graduated from LSU in Louisiana, Louisiana State University, where I had got a full athletic scholarship. After leaving LSU, uh, I had a trial with, trial with the Seattle Seahawks. After leaving there, played professional in Canada for six years. Uh, one year I played here with, uh, Shreveport Pirates. After leaving that, uh, I became a, a youth coordinator, and, uh, presently, now I'm here.
So, um, what is your interest in working as the Assistant Director of Recreation and Athletics for SPAR?
Well, my interest, uh, since I was a kid, I, I grew up in, uh, atmosphere like SPAR, which was called NORT in Louisiana, from the age of about eight years old all the way up to high school. And, uh, that, 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 uh, they helped me, molded me to the man I am today. I loved it. I mean, I played football, basketball, baseball, track. I experienced different things of, uh, you know, uh, on swings, miracle rounds, swimming in the swimming pools, things of that sort. So, the kids today who doing the same things I did grew up like I grew up in New Orleans.
So, do you see there being a specific role that recreation and athletics can have in our community?
Maybe trying to help the young kids bridge the gap between the younger and the old, uh, helping them come together, maybe, trying to fill the facilities up a little bit more, because right now it's kind of down.
So, you think that you could, we can add more programs that can get more kids involved in our, in what we've got as far as facilities?
Uh, correct.
Okay. I personally feel that if, if kids are doing recreation, they have less time to get into other stuff. So, I'm excited to hear that you are kind of on that same page.
Exactly.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bradford.
Beat me to the punch. Anyway, how you doing, sir?
I'm doing pretty-
Uh, so you, your background and, and your life experiences as a youth was involved in public recreation, is that my understanding?
Uh, correct. From the age of about eight years old, all the way to, uh, my high school years. These kids today, I, I was one of those kids. I was, you know, it was, well, I was in a program like SPAR, which raised me to be a man, the man I am today, had me, uh, molded me so I was able to get a full scholarship to Louisiana State University. So, yes, I would say that.
So, you see, you see, are you familiar with SPAR, our, our system?
Uh, yes. I had the ple- uh, pleasure of meeting with Shelley.
Okay.
She went over kind of the ins and outs of what was going on. She didn't go over too much over the budget with me.
Okay.
But, uh, for us, I also shadowed one of the employees that, and I visit all sixteen, uh, community sites.
Okay. Well, I mean, my interest in, 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 in sports, I mean, in the SPAR, I mean, there's different divisions, but we, we have a lot of, uh, kids that, that are not engaging in our recreation activities, which some are coming on. We need to bring them in. We have some very nice renovated SPAR. I mean, matter of fact, Lakeside is going to be opened up very soon, right? And, uh, not Lakeside.
Not Lakeside.
Uh, Lake Shore, Lake Shore. Be a berry, be a berry. How do, how do you see you can, you can provide some, some type of, uh, attraction initiative to bring more youth in by providing different activities? What, what, what do you consider your strengths in, in, in giving those, those directions? And, and, and in regards to attracting kids, put them in a, in a, in a very, uh, meaningful program to, to, to put them on a track like you also, because we don't have, we don't have the road models like you had. A lot of kids have, have to go through this SPAR program to even get the skills to be competitive in sports. Do you see-
I would, I would say maybe, uh, the outreach, out outreach to the community, uh, trying to, you know, bring, like I say, bridge the, uh, the gap between the young and the old. Trying to show them the right way to do things instead of the wrong ways of doing things. Like I said, I mean, I, I was one of those kids, so I know what a mentor could do for a young man, or a young woman.
Okay. Well, I'm on, I'm on, I mean, I, I appreciate your candor, but I want to also challenge you to, um, to be out there in this, in the, in the, in the, in the field, in the, in the streets where they are, and bring them into, uh, organized sporting, uh, atmosphere. And let's, and let's, and let's, and let's work with these young people. We got, even in my district, I think, we don't have a whole lot of big centers. I mean, I think, I think Airport, uh, Southern Hills, Lakeside, David Rains, and one other. What's, what's on Panzer Road?
Crop.
Be a crop elk?
Yeah.
Okay. Do any of those have swimming pools? How many have swimming pools, Chair?
Airport.
Airport have swimming pool?
Airport.
Bill Cockrell?
Southern Hills.
Who else? We don't have, we don't have but three pools?
Bill Cockrell has been there.
We had pools that have been drained. Patty Perry even had a park, a pool.
They got a spray park now.
Okay. Anyway, I, I want, I want you to look at, I want you to look at all, oh, here's Shelley, okay, here she come. We asking them something here.
Um, we have five swimming pools in our-
Where are they?
They are at Airport.
Airport.
David Rains.
David Rains?
Mm-hmm.
Optimal?
We have a swimming pool and a spray ground at David Rains. Matter of fact, it's being renovated right now, so it'll be in really great condition for the summer.
Okay.
Uh, Bill, um, okay, you got me off.
Southern Hills.
Southern Hills, Corby's, and Bill Cockrell.
Oh, Corby's, I missed Corby's.
Five of them. And today, we have nine large centers. If you know with the renovations, Valencia, now with Bill Bear- If you know with the renovations, Valencia, now with Bill Berry's undergoing, Lakeside, I mean, we are strategically located in most of, in all of your communities, Airport's one of our largest, matter of fact, the most attended rec center we have. I do want to say, before we get the word out that we're low in attendance, our summer camp is on waitlist already, happens every year, we don't have enough spaces, and that's why our partnerships with other youth organizations are so important, because we cannot at SPAR serve every child, but those centers are being utilized, the more upgrades we do, the more programs and services we're being able to offer.
Thank you for that, and I know we're, we're engaging you, Mr. Mero, but this is not a, this is not a new position, is it, Chair, like as a, is not, is a vacant position?
Yes, sir, we've had two Assistant Directors positions at SPAR for the last several years. This one has not been filled since Ronnie Hemmard left when he was ill about three years ago.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Mero, thank you, and hopefully, again, your experiences and your desire to serve youth would transition the type of results that we want to see, okay? Thank you, sir.
Mero, I have Councilman Flurry.
They see your time.
Who said that? Who said, Mero? Couple things, first of all, thank you for the willingness to come, you would have been exactly the candidate that I would have picked from New Orleans. I was in New Orleans for a short time with the railroad, but I, they gave me a test to spell Pachetulus and Chopetulus and all those, and so I had to come back Shreveport, but you know Councilman Bradford on the end down there? Now, that's him right chunder, he's the one that had those thousand questions while I go for you, that nonsense. He made me Saturday go and walk. Now, you heard him talking about the kids, the children, but we've got a large population in this city of senior adults like Councilman Bradford and I and Councilman Green, so more so Councilman Green, but we're seniors that we need to make our parks senior and our golf courses senior friendly.
Okay.
Friendly, and I hope that'll be on your mission and to encourage seniors to walk on the paths that we have around the parks out there and to get out and enjoy our facilities. But I want to say again, I am so glad to have you coming on board and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mero, I just wanted to add on real quickly since Mr. Bradford asked you the nine, nine hundred questions, but I just wanted to tell you I appreciate your willingness to serve and let you know that Shelley runs a tight department and I think she'll be expecting a lot from you too, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, there was, there was five hundred walkers on Saturday, and Councilman, Councilman Flurry came in last and I came in next to last.
You didn't have to tell.
I was trying to keep up with you. I didn't want to run for leave.
Have to tell.
We'll get Mr. Mero to have y'all some water and some golf carts out there next time.
But no ice cream.
No ice cream, thank you, Mr. Mero.
Thank you.
There are no MPC appeals for tomorrow? Are there any other appeals, Mr. Thompson?
No, sir.
Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees? Property standards meeting, not next, next, the one after, but we'll get together on the dates on there. Kirk's report?
He already took my report, Mr. Chair.
Sorry about that, Mr. Thompson. And no executive session today, I think that.
There were the comments?
No.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that I watched the last couple of meetings at home and I heard comments from citizens about interactions with the police that were negative, from my colleague that had interactions with the police that were negative. Today, one of my constituents from my district brought up several concerns, some of them that I'd actually read on social media and had made mention of before, and a couple weeks before that, and a couple weeks before that, and then last week I got a call from a mom who was disturbed because she was trying to enter her home, had been talking to her neighbor, and the neighbor was attacked by someone that came up, she stayed around for the police report, the police showed up for the report, and there was a very distinct and palpable lack of courtesy. Now, she didn't want to come forward herself because that's how upset and how fearful she was, there could be retaliation about it, that's the, that's the temperature that they left her with, and that concerns me, but I'm not sitting here to say this because I think that we need to, to shake our fists at the police, I think that it's a symptom of a bigger issue, and I think that part of it might be staffing. If you're patrolling, you can't, I don't think that you're always in a, in a position where you can deploy all of the courtesy of somebody that's serving you Saturday afternoon tea, and I think that our officers are probably under a lot of stress when you look at our numbers as far as crime and violent crime, if you hear the kind of calls that they're taking, I don't, I think that we've got a lot of, a lot of people that are community policing and putting a positive message out there, but I don't think that you can go from playing basketball with the kids to a robbery back to playing basketball with a kid. So I'm hoping that as we move toward the future, and if you want to speak to this, Chief, I'm happy to hear whatever you have to say, but I think that we've got to start as a community realizing that these issues are a symptom of a bigger issue within that department, not because we need to finger point at anyone, but because we need to have the right resources for the people that are doing that job, and that might be, that might be training, it might be, it might just be more staff, but there's definitely something up because I don't think that our citizens are imagining it when they feel it, but I think there's a reason for it that needs to be addressed, and I don't think it's necessarily a matter of further punishing them for what they see as not being the right, the right level of decorum. That's all I had to add, thank you, Chair.
Yep, I think that's it, if there's nothing else, then.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Green?
Councilman Green.
That's all right.
If that's it, then this meeting is adjourned.